All right, here we go. All right, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for March 11th, 2024. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tinsborough Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tinsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tinsborough Fire Chief in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I would like everybody who can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Let's start with Board introductions. I'll go from my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schaffner, Assistant Town Manager.
Good evening, Ryan Schneider.
Good evening, Mike Moran, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Katerina Kalabokas.
Good evening, Colin Noizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Kat Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. From an agenda standpoint, from the printed agenda, the only thing is we're going to switch Items Four and Five. Normally, we have the Town Manager's Report. Colin gets bumped down a little bit later. We'll do the public hearing first. And with that, I will entertain a motion regarding meeting minutes.
I move that the Select Board approve the regular session meeting minutes for February 26, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 400.
I move that the Select Board approve but not release the executive session minute meetings, meeting minutes for February 26, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carries 400. Okay, we've got a public hearing. National Grid poll petition? Oh, I'm sorry, Citizen Business Time. Sorry. Let me open it up for Citizen Business. I do understand that we have some folks here for Citizen Business Time. Who wants to go first? Come on, it's just, it's just the two of you, so hopefully you guys don't battle it out. Please address the board, give your name and address.
John Murphy, 61 Ting Road. I just have a couple of quick things I want to go through. One has to do with an agenda item that was on last week's Select Board meeting about the Affordable Homes Act, a proposal for a transfer fee of 0.5% to 2% for high-end real estate transactions. I want to instruct the board or request that the board do not sign the letter to approve that tax and recommend that with the state. I don't think it's something that we should be supporting new taxes just because we don't think it'll impact you. There's a lot of discussion that there wasn't any definition of the high end or any of that, but I still think just overall as a, as a point of reference, we're taxing up and we shouldn't be looking for any new taxes locally or statewide. So that's the first piece I had. The next one was an agenda item for tonight. There's an item for open space residential development of changing the residential bylaw associated with that. I reviewed the informations associated with that, and I don't believe that there's any reason that we should be changing that bylaw. I read through the Attorney General's letter and even with the Assistant Attorney General's response in that letter that the item for the open space residential bylaw was not being disapproved in that recommendation. So there's no, there's no real reason that we should even address that tonight, and we should leave the control of that with the town and the town meeting to let people make their decisions from that. The last piece, just going through the MBTA communities, I wanted to make sure that we're still planning to have a town meeting to approve or disapprove of that MBTA Communities Act. I saw a note that they were looking to, sorry, my concussion is hitting a little bit, but there was a potential of taking the town meeting away and having that be for the planning board, but my understanding is that that's just for requests as they come in to utilize that zone and that that would be with the planning board. So I'm not sure whether that was how I was reading it or not, I just wanted to clarify that part. But with respect to the MBTA communities, I wanted to make sure that we do put that to a town vote. I think it's a pretty serious thing, especially where we're not able to consider any local services associated with the impact of multifamily housing and the dense housing districts being added to our service level. Monies associated with that aren't supposed to be considered. And then also, you know, once we do actually have that in place, there won't be any vote from the town to approve or disapprove of any particular project that's going on with that. So we'll be stuck with whatever people go to develop that with, just limited to whatever restrictions the planning board is able to enforce. So I just wanted to bring all those things to people's attentions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take your time.
Hope your concussion recovers quickly.
Mr. Crawford.
My head's just fine.
Well, thank you for providing citizens' time.
I get right to it because I tried to fit the timeframe. Governor Healey's Municipal Empowerment Act is a slap on the face of all residents, in my opinion. The name of the act itself is bothersome. Government does not need to be further empowered. The passage of the MBTA Communities Act seems to have emboldened the governor. Many provisions of the Municipal Empowerment Act are concerning, questionable, and appear a bit petty. First thing, eliminate requirement to print the annual town report. How ridiculous. The little book that we get once a year that the library puts together and now you want to mandate the town doesn't have to print them from anybody? Just ridiculous. Second one, appointed and combined treasurer-collector. Tinsborough's already done that. So we did it, so why strip the right of other towns to self-govern themselves? They can vote on it themselves. They don't need the mandate that that can happen in every town in Massachusetts. Then this one, a regional board of assessors. Why give up the local control of our board of assessors? We already fought for control of the dispatchers and for the police and fire, you know? So we don't need to give up any of the local control of our board of assessors. The Municipal Empowerment Act includes several positions, provisions designed to empower communities to generate additional local revenue, as if we need to do that. Increasing the local lodging tax ceiling from 6% to 7%. Increasing the local meals tax ceiling from 0.75% to 1%. That means meals tax goes from 7% to seven, seven and a quarter on your sandwich. Then there's adding a new 5% local option to motor vehicle excise surcharge. It's unbelievable. The Healey administration is beginning to feel like déjà vu, tax successence. The passage of the millionaire tax is filtering down to the rest of us. It was only 4% on all the millionaires to flood, to flood the state. Now it's coming to us. Taxes anywhere, they can get it. Now why the town administrator's contract extension needs, contract would have to be three years instead of five years? By law, I guess it's three years and that would go to five years. Well, that sounds good, except I've known town managers, they don't even have to stay in their contract. The grass is greener, they just go regardless of what the contract says anyway. And I certainly wouldn't want to be stuck with a dud for longer than we have to be. So I don't, I don't see that either. Then there's electric buses in New England that when it gets cold, they're not going to work, not going to get the kids to school, and, and they're not going to get people to the T. When, when the T don't work, the buses won't work either in cold winter weather. So are these junk fees that, are these the junk fees that President Biden says he wants to eliminate? Looks like we're putting them in place here in Massachusetts. Ask that you oppose the Municipal Empowerment Act. That harms some businesses, taxpayers will be squeezed a little bit more, and local governance is marginalized. Now finally, on all of the zoning amendments being proposed to the annual town meeting, please, slow things down a little bit. We have a laundry list of zoning issues for it to be considered. And there's special town meeting every fall, because we have a permanent special town meeting in the fall. So why can't we move some of these things to that meeting so people can digest all this material? The MBTA community zoning of housing for 750 units on 50, on, on only 50 acres of land does not require consideration until December 31st, 2024. So let's hold off on zoning until this fall on the MBTA Communities Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak during citizens' business time? Excellent. All right. Now I can move on. I was a little jumpy. All right. Let's go to Item Number Five, National Grid Poll Petition for Ting Road. If you want to come up, Jackie, do you want to kick us off on this one? Thank you.
Including your packet this evening is a request from National Grid for permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protection fixtures along across a public way. National Grid wishes to install one SO poll on Ting Road beginning at a point approximately 40 feet northwest of the existing poll number 13, replacing the tree guy with a stub pole. A representative from National Grid is here this evening to present and, and the request and answer questions you may have. Butters were notified of this hearing and invited to attend to express concerns or ask questions.
Okay, do you want to open the public hearing?
I move that the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carries 400. Public meeting is open. Vaz, did you want to?
Uh.
Anything to add? Jackie's usually pretty darn good at giving the, the overview.
Yeah, she, uh, she's dead on. I really can't say much.
Yes, introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Vazna Eng, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover, Mass. Representing National Grid.
Thank you.
So she pretty much said anything, everything. We're looking to get a petition approval to have a, a guide pole placed in the right-of-way approximately 641 feet northwest of the intersection of First Ave and Tings Road. From there, it'll be 20 feet from the center line west of that, placed in the right-of-way, publicly, I'm sorry about that.
Great. I guess we'll, before I open it up, anything the board wants to ask about before I open it up to any of the butters or anybody else who'd like to ask questions relative to the public hearing?
Let's hear from them first.
All right. Any of the butters or anybody want to come up and speak regarding the public hearing? Come right on up. Give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Arnie Patello, and I live at 41 Ting. And I'm for whatever National Grid needs to do to make it safe because as of right now, the wire goes through the tree and the trees in that area are not good anyway. And we've spent thousands of dollars to have a lot of them removed. And the one in particular where the pole is going to go near should come out of that tree again for safety reasons, and a new pole be put in with the guide wire to support that, at least that area. It's a safety thing for the houses, I think, for my house especially. So I would appreciate if you would approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I guess we can close the public hearing and...
I move that the Select Board close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carries 400. All right, deliberation. Anybody have any questions? Seems pretty straightforward. This is pretty standard stuff for us. Any questions? Then I will entertain it. No questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board grant the poll petition as presented by National Grid for the installation of one SO poll on Ting Road beginning at a point approximately 40 feet northwest from existing poll number 13, replacing tree guy with a stub pole.
And the guide wire?
It's there.
Perfect. I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 400. Thank you for coming in.
Cheers.
We are going to do the Town Manager's Report now because this is what everybody waits for.
I believe it. All right, my apologies, I navigated out of the folder. I had a productive meeting this afternoon with Colonial Power, which is the company that manages our energy aggregation program. This is the program that allows residents in Tings Road to participate in our aggregation, which always sees energy supply rates lower than what National Grid is offering. Tings Road is currently locked into a contract with First Point Power through November of 2024. The current rate is 0.13803 per kilowatt hour. And looking at some of the indicative pricing that we received today, what we'll likely be looking at next week is executing an agreement effective November 2024 for 24 months at The energy market has been pretty volatile, but the rates are down right now, so this would be the time for us to act. It's a two-year contract, and then we'll start looking at rates again in two springs from now. Last week, we were notified that the Sewer Commission will receive $480,000 from the FY24 Congressional House spending package for a pretty expansive sewer capacity project. It's no, Tinsborough is not unique in the fact that we deal with capacity issues largely because we rely on neighboring communities to send our sewage to, and they are having capacity issues. Regionally, this is a larger project to help reduce that, reduce the amount of sewage that's going into these systems so that we can increase our capacity. Fortunately, Tinsborough has been very strategic and cautious with development, particularly along the sewer lines, so we're not in as bad of a place as many of our neighbors are. But this is a huge win. The Sewer Commission does tremendous with federal earmarks. Just this year, they earned almost $900,000 in a congressional earmark for design of their next phase, so we're appreciative for the funding. We're moving right along on the design and construction estimating for the partial demolition, exterior envelope restoration, and relocation of the original Winslow School. There's not much in the way of schematic designs. We sent them the town meeting video to watch, as well as the report that came out of the 250 Visioning Committee. What they're really working on is how to make that feasible, and so the end result will be cost estimates that we'll provide a public update on. There will be some minor considerations that we'll get some feedback on. For instance, part of the addition in the rear is going to be removed, and so we'll have a wall where we'll need to replace windows. I assume the Historic Commission would prefer that we match the ones that were in the front, but those are the minor design considerations. But Socotech, which is the engineer or the architect on the project, is moving along nicely on that project. The Town Center project is shaping up. The observation deck was installed last week, and site work continues this week. We also got the new plans from Time Bond on the foundations for the pedestrian bridge, and we're now working on getting the subcontractor schedule for the installation of the shallow foundations. Simultaneously, it's been a long road, but we've been working with MassDOT on the permitting piece. Essentially, we have three or four different maintenance agreements for the town, the veterans' monuments, which are technically on state property, the sidewalk over there. We're working with our town council and MassDOT Legal to consolidate all of those so that it'll be one maintenance agreement where the town obviously takes control and ownership of the things that we're putting on the parcel. The Public Safety Communications Upgrade Project is moving along. As this board knows, last month, we had to pivot as it related to the placement of new microwave equipment. But fortunately, thankfully, the town of Westford and town of Drakehead have been helping us identify alternative places for the microwave equipment to go, and it actually was beneficial to us because we identified an alternative approach that will boost not just our communications, but communications from Drakehead and Westford, which are two of the communities that we rely pretty heavily on for mutual aid, particularly in the fire service. So that project will be completed by the end of the month. It's on budget, and it'll be great to see that finally wrapped up. A reminder to residents that the Highway Department, the Board of Health, and the Sustainability Committee will host the 17th Annual Townwide Cleanup this year during the month of April. Supplies are available now at Town Hall and at the Highway Garage. It's a relatively simple program. You gather as many or as few friends as you'd like, pick an area of town, and you pick up trash and leave it in the bright yellow bags that we provide. When you're done, you just have to tie the bags up, leave them on the curb, and the Highway Department throughout the day picks these bags up. We generally get quite a bit of participation. Many of the schools help out. There are obviously some areas in town that could use it the most, so wherever you see trash, please feel free to help. I want to just thank all our poll workers and the town clerk for hard work to make the presidential election primary last week happen. Many of the poll workers worked 14-hour days, and I know that Joanne was here at Town Hall until after midnight putting together the results. We are going back out to bid on Wednesday for the bicentennial field irrigation project. As this board is well aware, we value engineered some of the components out because the last time we went out to bid, the, the project costs were far higher than the budget. The designer redid all of the bid docs. They're going to be released on Wednesday, and bids are due on April 3rd. And just a reminder that the Select Board will convene a tri-board meeting on April 8th at 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. That includes the Finance Committee, the School Committee, Select Board, and we've also confirmed the attendance of Senator Kennedy and Representative Colin Gary.
Thank you. Since you had so much there, I'll open up the board for any questions. Then Kat, she's got a bunch as well, lots of updates. Any questions from the board? Comments? I'm excited about the Town Center, the board's going on there. Yes, a lot of good stuff happening. All right. Kat, take it away.
All right. The Winslow School hazardous material basement began today and is expected to last a month. You'll probably see a lot of trucks entering and exiting the area by Littlefield as well. And we also have a pod set up. I saw a couple of people while they were delivering it stop by, and that is where we're going to store some of our documents after they're cleaned and till we figure out what to do with them. So the contractor has erected a fence around the construction zone to contain the work. The Littlefield Library will remain accessible to the public. And additionally, last week, the underground storage tank was removed. A request for proposals was released for Assessor's Consulting Service with proposals due March 20th. The service is procured for a three-year period. And the town has recently applied for an AARP Lible Communities Grant to fund an ADA accessible and/or age-friendly benches and picnic tables up at the crypt. In addition, we also applied for historical markers and interpretive signs that will feature murals highlighting the town's rich history along the accessible ramp leading to and around the crypt, as well as the, the new footbridge. The goal of this grant application is to create a vibrant public space and educate residents on the area's history. A request for designer services was issued last month for the design of the new pavilion at the new Sherburne Ave Recreation Center across from the Toll Brothers property. This project was awarded to Robert Hannan Architecture out of Salem, New Hampshire, who met the criteria outlined in the RFS. They will be responsible for preparing the design, construction documents, and estimates for us to issue a bid for construction. And staff are working with the engineering firm KNA, who is preparing the design, construction, and estimates and bid docs for Phase One of the Sherburne Ave Rec Center project. A draft plan was sent last week for the town to review, and staff plan to convene a meeting with Sherburne Ave Open Space Visioning Committee sometime in April to provide an update on where we are with the project and to hopefully show them the new clubhouse. And lastly, staff are meeting with the contractor, contractor awarded the police station parking lot project hatch group for a site walk this Wednesday, and then to plan to schedule a date to begin construction of the new parking lot at the police station.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Any questions, comments from the board? You know, lots of stuff. It's only been two weeks, and you guys went through two full pages. So, good job, lots of things happening. Colin, where can people see this information?
You can catch the Town Manager's Report as a brief visual on social media with a link to the full report. It's got its own category on tinsboroughma.gov where you can sign up for alerts anytime one is published. Thanks to Tinsborough Media, it's also a podcast, so you can listen to it while you drive, which is what everybody wanted, I'm sure. And you can also catch a copy of it on the, I think it's still on the front page of the Neighbor to Neighbor every month. Lots of places. And if you have a suggestion for another place, we'll find it.
Excellent. All right. With that, we'll go to new business. So let's start with 6A, review of potential zoning amendments for May annual town meeting. Is anyone kicking off? Eric, if you want to come on up? I didn't know whether you guys were leading in or Eric's going to be taking away.
No, I'm going to give it to Eric. Just, I'll note that the Planning Office has uploaded all of the information relative to these to the Planning Board's page on tinsboroughma.gov so folks can read at their leisure. And I believe the public hearings will commence at the Planning Board's first meeting in April.
I'll get to that, yeah.
Perfect.
All right, Eric, welcome.
Thanks very much. I appreciate the opportunity to go over some of the zoning amendments as we head towards Springtown Meeting. As was previously advertised, we have six zoning articles that both the Planning Board and the Zoning Review Committee have been working on. We were anticipating that that public hearing would be starting on March 21st. However, it's anticipated, unexpectedly actually, that the Planning Board's not going to have a quorum by the 21st, so the Planning Department is planning to re-notice that public hearing to start on April 4th. That'll give the Planning Board two meetings before the Select Board is planning to close the warrant, so those hearings will take place on April 4th, and I'd anticipate that some of them would be continued, if not all of them, until the 18th. The six zoning amendments, as some of the previous members of the public had mentioned, we do have, the town itself has some work ahead of it. The Zoning Review Committee and the Planning Department has been working diligently to come up with zoning that's compliant with the MBTA community's legislation. As you've seen, and I'd like to have the opportunity to present, the Zoning Review Committee had come up with a strategy that identifies three sub-districts. The legislation requires 50 developable acres to be zoned for multifamily housing by right. However, the guidelines explain and point out that it doesn't have to be undeveloped land. So developable simply means that it's not wetlands, it's not protected, there's, there could be buildings already on there, there are communities that are proposing multiple sub-districts or just one large contiguous area. Tinsborough's strategy, proposed strategy, is three sub-districts that provides an opportunity for short-term increases in housing diversity. So that would be up at the Pheasant Lane Mall parking lot area. The second subdivision is down towards where Merrimack Commons and Tinsborough Crossings are, where there's already housing development that's taken place, and there's no reasonable expectations that there'd be any new development there anytime soon. And then the third sub-district is an area that is behind, essentially behind Olive Garden, where the town currently has a very large industrial warehouse already permitted. If it weren't for difficulties within the capital markets, I would have anticipated that industrial development to have already started. But if capital costs continue to remain high, meaning interest rates, and that project never comes to fruition, the town has the opportunity to combine mixed use and/or multifamily development so that the community doesn't have to wait another several decades for a relatively difficult site to be developed commercially. I'd like to point out a couple of nuances associated with the sub-districts. As Colin had mentioned, the Planning Board webpage on the town website includes text for the zoning bylaw that'll be proposed to town meeting, assuming that it gets recommended by the Planning Board in its public hearings. But it also includes some visuals and charts that identify the specific areas for the sub-districts, as well as what their overall capacities are. So I guess I'd like to start with the one that I had mentioned first, which is up at the Pheasant Lane Mall area. That's a 12.3 acre site, essentially where there is vacant space for parking behind Bahama Breeze and I guess it would be behind Smokey Bones. That 12.3 acres could potentially, but not necessarily guaranteed, to yield 184 units at a density of 15 units per acre. That density is a requirement by the state. The other sub-districts, the ones that are down where we already have housing development at Tinsborough Crossing and Merrimack, Merrimack Commons, that area is a 27 and a half acre area. So that represents more than half of the town's required acreage, where we wouldn't expect any development to be happening anytime soon. And the third area is up in the industrial section behind Olive Garden. That's an 11.7 acre area, so it's not the entire parcels, it's only a portion of it. So that if we had, if, like I said, if that industrial warehouse project did not come to fruition, multifamily housing would be permissible just behind the B3 district across the industrial parcels that are behind Olive Garden. the B3 District across the industrial parcels that are behind Olive Garden, which would help encourage additional development, I believe, to expand our retail area. So overall, we're trying to look at the MBTA Communities as sort of a catalyst for economic development in a relatively smart and measured way, so that there is only limited and beneficial expansion with regards to multifamily housing that supports the town's commercial and retail corridor to the north. In terms of, I guess if you give me the opportunity, I guess to address some of the requests and/or comments about when is the appropriate time for communities to start considering compliance with the MBTA Communities' legislation, most communities that are adjacent communities like Tingsborough are presenting their bylaws intended to be compliant with MBTA Communities in their Springtown meetings. A, there's usually larger attendance. B, if there's any issues associated with passing zoning amendment that is compliance, it gives communities one more pass in the fall in order to pass legislation. If we wait until the fall and there is some sort of issue or the town decides not to pass it, it doesn't give communities enough time to make adjustments in order to remain compliant, as the resident had mentioned, by the end of this calendar year. So I know I have several other, I have five other amendments to go over, but I wanted to make sure I had an opportunity. Does anybody have any questions about MBTA Communities before I move on to some of the others?
All right, you've done the MBTA Communities.
I think that's a pretty good overview with regards to, yeah, exactly.
I don't know why you have to go through all six.
Yep.
So, anything else that you're...
I just want some clarity. First, people, appreciate all the hard work that you do for this, because it's not easy navigating the government's regulations for compliance from the state coming down. And so the first question I have is around the parcel that you mentioned behind Smokey Bones and Bahama Breeze. Does that impact the motorcycle venue that's there for training people to get a motorcycle's license? I'm just curious.
Let me just take a quick look. I can't recall the answer to that question.
I just do a shout-out to that business, because I got my motorcycle license some years ago, and it was a great experience, so I just didn't know if that was displacing them or not.
Yep. So this is Sub-District Two, and it does incorporate the area where there's motorcycle training.
Okay. So I just wonder if they would be allowed to move somewhere else or what have you, but we can talk about that.
So to be clear, one of the things that's important, this just changes the zoning.
Zoning, correct.
It doesn't change anything as far as what's there today and whether it'll even be built.
Correct. And I'm trying to lead this to questions that get further into the compliance that we're trying to meet from the state, and it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to build now. It doesn't mean we're going to do anything at all if, unless a developer is interested in developing this area. In other words, we're making these areas available for development. There's a lot of hurdles that may have to go through anyway to comply with whatever the state wants, but it's not like next week, next year, that this is going to start in earnest to displace a business and start to build or to do things. It just means that this town is compliant with the government regulation from Massachusetts.
Right. So it is simply zoning that's being proposed, but I don't want to mislead anybody with regards to what I would consider the potential for the change. There's certainly no doubt that there's developers who are looking at communities and trying to determine where the shortest-term opportunities are for multifamily housing development to take place. I mean, the whole reasoning behind the legislation at the state level is to encourage communities to find opportunities to have housing developed either short-term or long-term, right? So this is a, intended to be a long-term impact change at the state level. In terms of the sub-districts that are being proposed in Tingsborough's MBTA Communities bylaw, the parking lot at the Pheasant Lane Mall is definitely the shortest-term opportunity for housing to get developed. And the Zoning Review Committee, as well as others, looked at it as an opportunity to support the resident, I'm sorry, to support the commercial and retail businesses that are along that corridor. So while in terms of businesses that could be displaced, the motorcycle training business might be the only one that's displaced, but there's no structure there. They just need to find another open space to hold their training. And there are other parking areas within the Pheasant Lane Mall and other areas in our region. Even, one of the points that I like to make when I have conversations with people about the impacts of the MBTA Communities' legislation at the local level, in Tingsborough's case, I wouldn't put it, it's not far-fetched that the community might actually have been considering multifamily zoning or development for that section of town, even if MBTA Communities was not in existence.
Correct.
The overall demographics with regards to traffic counts are definitely lower than what are ideal, if not lower than what might catch the attention of developers when it comes to economic and retail investment along that corridor. And by incorporating multifamily housing development in an underutilized, non-tax-generating area for the town of Tingsborough, really only has a positive side with regards to economic impacts.
Exactly.
Even when you take into consideration, sure, will there be families that live there? The zoning is set up so that the development that takes place is not restricted with regards to the number of bedrooms. I would anticipate everything from studios to two bedrooms. Could there be three bedrooms? Possibly. More than that, probably not likely. The overall financial and economic impact on the area, I think, would be a positive one.
So I could make a leap, though, with something I'm excited about would be a train stop in that area, right? So further along behind where the train tracks already are behind Pheasant Lane Mall, be a nice area for a train track to increase the economic activity of that. And we know that Nashua, Pheasant Lane Mall is putting in a casino. So there's all kinds of stuff going on, and this would be one piece of that to allow for that development.
Sure. Yep, this is...
And it would also encourage development along 3A.
Yes. This is one piece. The, I do find MBTA Communities' legislation to be a half misnomer, right? So it does make sense in that the state used where mass transit is made available to determine which communities were subject to the requirements, but it doesn't mean that the communities that are subject to it have to have mass transit within their community. So Tingsborough is an adjacent community, we're adjacent to Lowell. I understand that Tingsborough doesn't have mass transit, and then you mentioned a train station up at the mall. The Capital Corridor Project, which was being evaluated by the state of New Hampshire, did hit some snags with regards to its overall studies. I would say that we probably need to see some sort of turnover and/or revitalization of that effort at the state level in New Hampshire. The state itself didn't have a great appetite for economic investment with regards to mass transit down between Nashua and Manchester. Obviously, it's designed to go all the way up to Concord. But yes, that was one of the primary and top choices with regards to a southernmost New Hampshire train station.
Thank you.
And that's a much more complicated issue to address.
Yes, I realize that.
I think it's me next, so I'm just going to keep going.
I'm just plugging in, sorry.
He's plugging in again.
That's okay. So it seems to me like when we're looking at these options, Sub-District Two is kind of your forerunner at the moment.
That, if you're, if you're looking at short-term, medium-term, and long-term, I actually look at it more as short-term, long-term, and no-term development, this is your short-term opportunity to have housing development. I'd like to point out that when the Zoning Review Committee hosted information sessions to review the language of the zoning bylaw, we had people come and attend, and I want to thank folks that are in the room today who came to express their concerns and opinions about which way the town should go. We did have people in attendance as well who were looking for housing development opportunities, saying that, recognizing the need for housing within the community of Tingsborough.
Okay. So, can we talk, just take a few moments to talk a little bit more about Sub-District Three? Can you just address maybe, so I can make sense of it in my own mind? So I understand that the parking lot area behind Bahama Breeze, right, it's already cleared, it's a parking lot, it would be easy to put multifamilies there. When I'm thinking about the area in my head, it does seem a little bit out of place to have, like, family homes directly in between a mall and restaurants. But it seems like Three would allow them to be kind of tucked away so that the noise is lesser, they might have a little bit better of a community. Can you maybe speak to what your thoughts are on that, or?
Sure. And these are really just my perspectives and not necessarily those of everybody on the Zoning Review Committee.
No, I appreciate that.
But in turn, if we were addressing specifically the Sub-District Three area, yes, it's a strip that is, that starts at the end of the B3 District and extends for a certain distance into the industrial district. And it spans essentially three different parcels. You've got 424, 406 Middlesex, as well as sort of like a tail end off of the back of the parking lot from Olive Garden. And the reason for this, obviously, is to ensure that the town is only complying with the certain amount of acres that the state has required it to. If the community at some point decides that they need additional zoning to support, you know, more diverse housing, multifamily, et cetera, at a less dense than 15 units per acre, this gives us the opportunity to look at it. Housing developed here, I wouldn't necessarily look at it, although it could be tucked away, if I was going to anticipate multifamily housing to get developed there, it would probably be part of a mixed-use development project. Because if you're going to go through the effort to develop the housing there, it unlocks and helps spread out the expense of developing the site for other types of uses, specifically, in this particular case, it's zoned industrial, but the town has the opportunity, if it was presented with, like, a mixed-use and/or retail expansion off of the 440 development, I think it would be something that the town should consider in the future if there's, if there's proposals for that.
Okay, thank you.
So I would look at both of them as opportunities for semi-walkable communities, where it might not be your walkable tree-lined neighborhood type of neighborhood. It is a walkable-to-amenities type of neighborhood, where you've got a slightly, slightly more urban setting, where you already have commercial and retail within walking distance.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
My only concern about the two along Middlesex Road, one by the Pheasant Lane Mall and then the one on the opposite side, is traffic. We've discussed at prior meetings the issues with traffic, you know, because of nature's remedy, and, you know, knowing that there's going to be a casino coming in in the not-too-distant future at the Pheasant Lane Mall, I just, I just question, can, can that section of the road handle more traffic?
Sure. I'd like to address that a bit. Communities are doing its best, their best, to comply with the state's requirements. And from a planning perspective, it's been frustrating, of course, because the legislation came before communities had an opportunity to address infrastructure challenges. So while the transportation's an obvious one, you know, sewer, water, electrical power, service, all of those are things that we'd like to take into consideration. So while this is simply the zoning proposal, when a, if and when a project is proposed, those are the opportunities for us to make, to mitigate the impacts from a traffic and/or infrastructure perspective. As the town manager had mentioned, Tingsborough is in a fairly fortunate position with regards to its capacity for sewer. From a traffic perspective, I would anticipate that this gives us an opportunity to elevate the importance of a southbound exit off of Route 3, which would help alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we have between Tingsborough and Nashua and Spitbrook Road. But those types of changes typically don't happen until you're faced with something that's imminent.
Okay. Good, thank you.
So, having been on the Zoning Review Committee, I've spent the last two and a half years with Eric going through this, we've had a lot of discussions to bring people back on some of these items. So for example, the location relative to traffic at the location right near the Pheasant Lane Mall, that's actually going to have the least traffic impact because it's, you can get right onto Route 3. It's going to come up through that, that, I don't know if everybody knows where that is, you know, you go down the ramp and it's elevated, so you have to come up, and that's going to be the way that people will likely be able to get to Route 3. The other thing I think is really important is that the parcels that we picked, we looked at it to say, look, we don't want to do 500 or 750 units all at once. We need to phase these things in. So we picked locations that met the, the letter of the law and the spirit. There are opportunities for us here that are, that are good for the town. There's some things that are here. Again, it's one of those things where it's a, it's a zoning change. This will go to town meeting. It should go to annual town meeting. We've talked about this before, our preferences for big items like this, that we want them to go to town meeting. And so this is something the town should decide on. I think that if you look at the folks from the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals and the folks that have been on the committee, there's been a lot of considerations in here, and, you know, we're all in agreement that this is something that we should do, that this is a good plan, and that it does meet, meet the compliance of the items. You know, we are in a different position, and, you know, I'm not going to debate all the things, but we are in a different position than, say, a Milton who has decided to go a different route. We're not as big as Milton, we're not a, we are an adjacent community. They are one of the towns or cities that has decided to go a different path, and I, I think they may be looking at what that, I don't think that's the fit for us. We get a lot of revenue, including the, we just got a $2 million grant that I feel very confident we would have never received without that, without being in compliance. And I know Milton's already lost some grants. So, you know, this is going to be one of the key things here. You talked about, there'll be public hearings as part of the Planning Board. This is a Planning Board warrant article, so there'll be ample opportunity for people to ask questions, be informed, show up, go to the Planning Board meetings, talk, ask questions. When we had public hearings the first time, we didn't have many people show up. There were some folks, Mr. Crawford was one of those people that was there, and I appreciate his questions.
Information sessions.
What was that?
Information sessions.
Information sessions, sorry. So I do think that people should be aware of what's going on here, but I, I think this is something that we, that we should do. I think it needs to go on the warrant, but, you know, we're not discussing that right now. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask you a question to make sure that we're, so if I'm, if I'm thinking of it, right, if, if there's a building over by Bahama Breeze, right, with a bunch of residents in it, and they're all trying to take Route 3 to go to the work, to go to work in the morning, they have to take a right out of their parking lot to go up. If they're over behind Olive Garden, then they have to cross lanes and take a left to go up. Because I don't think, I mean, you can, of course, go back down towards Dream Diner and then get on the highway that way, but most people just kind of travel up DW Highway. There's, there really isn't a Route 3 connection that's relatively close. You have to go through three or four stoplights and...
Well, and if you look at where it is, so you can, I'm not sure who's driving, but...
Me. Right, there's two entrances there.
Yeah, there's multiple entrances. So there's multiple lights, you know, you've got the one near Smokey Bones, you know, so there are multiple...
Then we're encouraging people to drive through parking lots.
Not necessarily, no. Remember, there's roads that, that go through that. That would all have to be adjusted, too, by the way. There's, there's...
I'm calling those roads are stretching it, but yes, I see what you're saying.
The zoning that's in place, right, doesn't, isn't suggesting that the access, that for the potential development that could be possible if the zoning is passed at town meeting, that the accessibility to those units would be on the existing, I guess, access roads to the parking areas, and that we wouldn't be, you know, it's still subject to site plan review as well. So while it's a by-right use, that doesn't mean that it just goes to the building department for building permits. It means it still goes in front of the Planning Board for site plan review, public safety with regards to vehicular access, ingress, egress, stoplights, turn directions, you know, lane widths, et cetera, are all things that would be under consideration for a site plan proposal.
I hear you, and I did not mean to jump ahead, I really didn't. I just, when we were addressing things, I was unsure if you had information or if there were plans that I was unaware of. So yes, thank you very much.
Sure. We haven't had any proposals. I certainly have had, you know, companies inquire, you know, to our office, my office, about, you know, development opportunities there, and I've been basically suggesting to everyone that they wait to see what the town's response is to MBTA Communities.
Excellent. Any other questions on the MBTA, Collins? All right. How about the next one?
Very good. The next one is the removal of town meeting approvals, the requirement for town meeting approval for open space residential development. And I put in parentheses, you know, per the Attorney General's letter. I pulled out some language, and as well as on the Planning Board webpage, I've put up some justification and explanation with regards to why this is being sent to town meeting. When the Zoning Review Committee went through the work to recodify the zoning bylaw, the recodified bylaw went to the Attorney General's office for a... recodified bylaw went to the Attorney General's office for a complete review. It's kind of like a free service with regards to evaluating all of the, all of the language in the zoning bylaw for legal compliance. And one of the elements of the zoning bylaw that was specifically rejected and removed by the Attorney General's office was town meetings, town meeting requirement approval for multifamily housing. And they cited the case law as well as the state laws that it was not compliant with. When I saw that note and asked them about why they didn't include the open space residential requirement for town meeting, they said that it was an oversight. I asked if they could revise their review letter. They said, "We prefer not to revise our review letters, we would recommend that you go to town meeting, we'll give you a letter and explanation with regards to why, which is why there's an additional link on the planning board's webpage with communications to the Attorney General's office about that element." And I would certainly recommend to the planning board that they included on the warrant article itself. If you needed me to go into specific details with regards to reading underlined or highlighted components within the Attorney General's letter, I'm happy to do that tonight. It'll also be, I'm sure, covered during the public hearings for that zoning amendment article.
Yeah, and Eric, that, that item, and then the other one that the Attorney General already flagged, since we had the Barrett Group look at our bylaws and make recommendations, that's been, both of those have been on the list, that they said, "You're going to have a problem with this because it conflicts with Mass. General Law." Because I know we've talked about it long before the AG did theirs, we were expecting that.
So while I understand that citing very specific sections of state law or other cases, that does provide concrete evidence as to reasoning behind striking that section, if I was going to try to summarize or explain it, generally speaking, when it comes to approving specific uses within a community or within a town zoning bylaws, you need to have some sort of criteria associated with making that decision. By requiring town meeting approval for proposal for either open space residential development or multifamily, it gives extreme discretion to a varying body, the number of people who are there, the people who are present at town meeting change from meeting to meeting, and there's no criteria that those individuals are held to, to justify their decision. So they don't like the project, they can deny it, they like the project, they approve it, but that's not the way zoning approvals are intended to work, nor are they regulated to work. So that, that's essentially the way I would boil down the reasoning of the Attorney General's requirement that it be removed from the zoning bylaw.
So questions on this one? Questions, comments?
No.
Okay, next.
The next item, which I've received some feedback on as well, is changing the solid waste disposal in the industrial districts from prohibited, and I had listed, to by special permit, but I've been in touch with town council as well since that was published, and I have some additional information to share with the select board and the public on that. This was one of the elements that the Attorney General's office, this is this, one of two, meaning the multifamily requirement approval at town meeting and the prohibition of solid waste disposal, were the two items that the Attorney General's office specifically rejected from the town's zoning bylaws during their review of the recodified bylaw. When I reviewed that with town council, one of the things that he had pointed out is that currently the town is in a sort of like, I would say like a state of vulnerability, because the Attorney General's rejection of that language means that the solid waste disposal is currently allowable by right. When I asked town council about what his recommended pathway to rectify the situation was, he said, "Well, there's technically three options. I mean, you could do nothing and remain, you know, with it permissible, and that's probably the most compliant with state law. You could go to a town meeting and suggest that you make it by special permit, but it's not really a special permit," is the way he described it, "because it's not something that you can technically deny. Or you could go back to town meeting and reinstate the prohibition if your community already was prohibiting that use prior to July first in nineteen eighty-seven, which is a date that is specifically stated in the state's laws." So I went back, researched the zoning bylaws, the town did prohibit it prior to July first nineteen eighty-seven. Town council is going to request that the Attorney General revise its letter. As I mentioned earlier, they've been reluctant to make those types of revisions, and I think the final recommendation to the town is going to be to re-prohibit, re-prohibit that use in the industrial district with that justification, and we'll provide that to the Attorney's, the Attorney General's office if and when town meeting approves that.
So, this was one that we had some lively discussion in zoning review. We definitely want to maintain it being prohibited in the industrial, we don't want solid waste disposal. It's not good for the town, we've had bad history with it. So, my take is that if council can get it to the point where the AG lets us keep it the way it is, great, if not, this needs to go to town meeting and we need to make sure that everybody puts that prohibition back, because...
I agree.
We don't want it, can't have it, we've had bad experience before with solid waste disposal, and we don't want to go down that road. So that's my take on it. Other questions?
So I guess just a clarification, you're saying that back before eighty-seven, we've already prohibited solid waste disposal? So are we just reaffirming that if we have to take it to town meeting, is that...
There is a legal result that happens when the Attorney General's office rejects the language in their letter. So that letter is a public document, which leaves the town, well, it makes the town subject to the Attorney General's decision. It's like you had a court case, they decided that it wasn't legal, so they struck it, you're obligated to comply until you pass something else with justification that shows, in this particular case, and my apologies, their error. And it's not even so much their error, because when we submitted the recodified bylaw, I didn't have any reason to think or to submit any prior versions of the zoning bylaw, and only when we received their letter back with it rejected, did we determine a course of action to try to rectify their decision.
Thank you.
And rightly so. So, I mean, if we have a town bylaw we've already passed, we don't want another, lack of a better word, dump in town. We would prefer not to, so very smart one to put before the town.
Understood.
Not important, but curiosity, July first nineteen eighty-seven, what a very random date.
I don't have the explanation as to how and when that came about, but it is, it's written directly into Mass. General Law. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The only I can comment is, I know Charles George, Charles George landfill is there, and I know it was capped at some point, and maybe it was after all that work was done, they decided to pass that. It's also the start of a new fiscal year, too.
Yeah, my guess is, there was legislation that went into effect on July first nineteen eighty-seven relative to...
At the state level.
To state, the state controlling all that. But...
Again, not important, I just, in case you happened to know, I was curious.
Town council might have more, more history lessons for us, though.
Trivia question.
But just to...
Thank you very much, I'm sorry to derail.
So just to add on that, you know, there are some things, like when we talked about the MBTAs, where you sit there and say, "I don't think that one's worth it fighting."
Oh, this one, yeah.
This one?
Yeah.
We would be fighting the state on this one, because there's no way that that...
There's also a, like a viable path, right? So it's already been pointed out that, you know, this is the state law, if you've satisfied this requirement, there's a path for you to move forward. There isn't specifically a path to move forward to fight against the other recommendations with regards to town meeting approval for certain types of housing.
And the key here is for residents, this may or may not be on the warrant article. If we can get it addressed without town meeting, maintaining the prohibition, but...
If I was going to give odds, I would say it's like, you know, ten percent chance that we'll see a non-zoning amendment solution, and I would anticipate it's going to be cleaner for the town to reiterate its prohibition and submit it to the AG's office.
Perfect, okay. All right, next.
The fourth one I would list is the change to their zoning bylaw. This is pretty cut and dry, it's a removal of Section nine point one, Part D, that lists several different alternatives for developers besides constructing actual affordable units for projects that are seven or more units. Over my five-plus years within Tingsborough, I've watched, you know, several different types of development take place, spoke to many other types of communities that may have struggled with regards to having affordable housing constructed, and I'm confident that by the town removing this section, they are increasing the, they're increasing the chances of having their affordable units that they desire to protect their subsidized housing inventory constructed, and it reduces the complexity. So, you know, I might refer to the Toll Brothers project, Toll Brothers was a good community partner with regards to working with the planning board and the planning department to come up with a, an affordable housing facilitation agreement, but that was a pretty complicated process to go through, and it has resulted in the construction of sixteen units on Sherburne Avenue. But had we removed some of those elements prior, there, we probably would have had to move forward with the construction of affordable units themselves and/or through a partner. So it's, it's just clearer for the community and the development community as to what the expectations are for affordable housing construction.
Questions on this one?
No.
No, this is one of those items that we'd identified, Eric, early on in this cycle, that we wanted to close up that, tighten up that loophole, lack of a better term. All right, next.
The next item is moving farmers' markets and farm stands to a general license instead of special permit. Currently, if you want to operate a farmer's market, you're not allowed to have a structure to begin with, but even if you just wanted to have outdoor tables and stands selling produce and other items with vendors, it requires a public hearing, advertisements and other fees. It seems like a complicated process for something that the community probably enjoys and wants to see more of. The zoning review committee identified it when it was reviewing the table of uses. So I mentioned it to town council, he sent a couple of resources from other towns that utilized their health department in order to issue permits for farmers' markets. I checked in with the health director as well as her staff, and they were certainly supportive of helping to enable that process. They already have a one-pager, I think that if this passes at town meeting between now and May seventh, I can work with the health department to come up with a more comprehensive checklist that ensures that farmers' markets have a clear path to getting, to operation without, without jeopardizing public safety. So we can make sure that they check in with the police department, fire department, others, food safety's probably the primary one, but I think it'll, it'll help the community itself.
Agreed. Any questions, comments on that one? Yes?
I'd like to add to this, that the way that it's structured right now, it's actually easier in Tingsborough to get a liquor license than to have a farmer's market. A farmer's market not only requires the public hearing, the applicant then has, we file that decision with the town clerk for a twenty-day appeal period, business days. Once that passes, the applicant can't actually start the farmer's market until they record the special permit decision with the registry of deeds. There's no appeal period on a liquor license, and we already were requiring the board of health to inspect the farmer's market prior, so this is not just on like...
Thank you for that, additional explanation.
People call and ask for the process from time to time, and it's far too cumbersome for the average person to host a farmer's market.
And we did say, you know, one of the things that we could do is, in the application process, get comment from public safety, you know? We want to be able to have people that can stop by a farmer's market safely and make sure that they're operating in an area that's not going to pose a safety risk to other folks. But I think for a right-to-farm community, probably be good if our farmers' markets weren't harder to get than a liquor license. Thank you, next.
We're almost done, and we can let my, our Boy Scout troop go pretty soon, and they're headed, they're, oh, we just passed seven o'clock.
We have a good audience, thank you for coming.
The last zoning article was a result of citizens that live along Kendall Road towards the Dunstable Line, basically west of Cummings Road. I had eight signatures submitted to my office on a request for advice on how to present a request to town meeting for consideration to rezone their residential parcels to something other than residential, either B-three or industrial. I provided as best I could on the planning board's webpage, you can access this map. This map is also going to go out in a letter to residents that are in that area to help facilitate conversation with the planning board. But this, these parcels, one through eight, essentially separate two industrial areas within town, so all along that town line, we have industrial districts, and then it's separated by residential parcels that are along Kendall Road. I think it would unify the zoning there, so from a planner's perspective and an economic development perspective, I look at it as a positive for the town. It's not something that I want to be presumptuous about, so we're trying to incorporate as much public input as possible.
And the, the residents, they're asking for this in those...
The residents in parcels one through eight, those were the signatures that I had received. The planning board expressed, as I introduced the articles, for them to get permission, or at least encouragement, to go ahead and file the public hearing notice, expressed concerns about how residents along Old Kendall Road might feel, so that's essentially within the corner of Kendall and Route Three. So we're going to make sure that those, those residents are informed of the public hearing process, and hopefully they'll be able to participate either on April fourth or April eighteenth. And they're wel, I'm, they're welcome to communicate with my office ahead of time at those times, or inconvenient to share their opinions.
And that's where I was going to go next was, so folks, April fourth, we believe, public hearing going to open with the planning board.
Correct.
If they would like and have questions outside of that, they can contact your office and...
Anytime.
And Eric's very good at getting back to people and giving detailed answers, so feel free to reach out to Eric Salerno, and that town planner's office is fantastic. So, any questions on this, on this last one? I know I rushed into that, but I wanted to make sure that people knew what, what the process was going to be. And again, these would all be warrant articles from the planning board that we would put on the warrant, be voted on at town meeting, and there'll be public hearing starting April fourth.
Sure, I know it's, it's a lot of items, not all communities are addressing additional zoning items while their communities are considering MBTA zoning amendments, but I think Tingsborough has important work ahead of them, they have good staff and committees that have been working on that, that language, it's all been reviewed and we've been working with town council, so I'm hoping that they all make it onto the, to the warrant.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Eric, thanks for coming in. Okay, item six B, review slash accept deed for open space parcel on Sherburne Ave, slash Toll Brothers.
Attorney DeShanes is here. While he's coming up, I want to just set the table.
Please, please do.
So, what the board is seeing tonight is a presentation of Toll Brothers completing the conditions that they were required to meet under a zoning board of appeals decision for the site that they're donating to the town. That decision was crafted based on feedback from the select board, we had several public meetings where, you know, the items that the select board was looking for were discussed. I've spoken to a few members of the planning board and conservation commission today, and I want to make it abundantly clear that nothing this board does this evening will in any way hinder, hold back, or take away any of the regulatory authority that statutorily lies with the planning board and the conservation commission, and I've talked to Doug about this as well. This is an item that will need to appear on the May annual town meeting, the select board can only accept and record land under the town's ownership with a vote of the, of town meeting. Scheduling, this was the most convenient meeting to do it, next meeting you have three budget presentations from the three different schools, and then your following meeting is a tri board meeting, so that's the reason they're here this evening. I've worked very closely with Doug and town council on this, the summary of what we're doing tonight is having this select board acknowledge that the conditions under the ZBA's decision in twenty twenty-one have been met to the satisfaction of the town, and that the deed that was presented by Toll Brothers is satisfactory for this board to present to the May seventh annual town meeting. Nothing can be recorded until such time that a vote is taken. In ahead, in advance of that, they're still working through the development of their site across the street and working through the planning board, and dealing with what is a proposed drainage structure that would be on the parcel that would be owned by the town, its deed restricted open space and would fall under the control of the select board. So, looking ahead at that, we've developed with Toll Brothers and with their council and our council, an agreement that protects the town's interest that essentially says that Toll Brothers will, at their own expense, install the necessary drainage structure according to a plan that was approved by our engineering department, that they'll provide the town with a fifty thousand dollar bond to ensure that... provide the town with a fifty thousand dollar bond to ensure that work is done, not just done, but it's done satisfactory to the town, and that they return to the conservation commission, which is the regulatory authority over stormwater, to amend their stormwater permit. So in many ways, this board tonight is simply saying, we asked for X, Y, and Z, you completed X, Y, and Z, town council's reviewed the deed, it's acceptable for us to ask town meeting to approve it, and you're adding in the protections for the town so that when you ultimately accept the parcel at town meeting, if there is drainage work that needs to be done over there per the plan that they've described, we've locked in an agreement with the developer that protects the town. So what did we ask the developer to do? They were required to install walking trails on the site, which have been done. They were required to redo the parking lot, which they've done, and they were required to do, I think at the time, minimal work at the clubhouse. But upon opening up the clubhouse, it required substantial work. In fact, I included in the packet tonight, or maybe I didn't yet, I intended to, but I will share with the board, photos of the work. Allison and I have had a chance to tour it with our building commissioner. The building commissioner has already issued an occupancy permit for the site. So that's where we're at. There's a copy of the agreement in here. You'll notice in the motion, it's contingent on final town meeting review, or, I'm sorry, town council review. Doug and I spoke a little bit close to the meeting, so Adam hasn't had a chance to review it. But again, I just want to be fully transparent here for the planning board members that I spoke to, that they still maintain all the regulatory authority they have over the site. This is a parcel that will be under your control, deed restricted open space, so we're just getting ahead of that before your town meeting.
Couple things, so you had a lot of words. Want to make sure we highlight some of the key items. So at town meeting, we're going to be officially accepting this parcel. At that time, that parcel will, that parcel will be deed restricted open space.
Correct.
There have been people that have been questioning, okay, what's going to happen? To be clear, that is what will happen at town meeting. There have been questions regarding stormwater, and we're still working through some of those, and conservation ultimately is going to be ensuring that that is addressed, because that's their purview. And there is a bond of fifty thousand dollars, which my understanding is from Jake, town engineer, says is ample and appropriate for what we're talking about. So I just want to make sure that we highlighted a couple. Go ahead, Colin.
I also left one really important piece out, I'm sorry, I was so excited to speak. As a part of this agreement, you'll see at the end of the agreement, and as part of the modification of the stormwater permit, the ongoing maintenance of the drainage structure they would install in this parcel becomes tied to the homeowners association, so the town wouldn't be financially responsible. Dave agreed to put that in the, on the homeowners association, and in fact, by amending the stormwater permit legally, it becomes binding on them. I left out the big piece, I apologize.
Which is why, because sometimes I know the answers to these questions before I ask them, so I want to make sure that we had all those covered. All right. Now with that, I will open it up to board questions. Mr. DeShane, did you want to add anything? I know we had a lot of stuff that was in there, but did we miss anything from your perspective?
No, thank you, and I would like to introduce myself, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Sorry.
Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, here representing Toll Brothers. With me this evening, David Buckley. David is the Director of Community Planning and has been at the forefront of working with the town on this, on this project. I really have nothing else to add except that, you know, as a native of Tingsborough, born and raised here and graduated from Tingsborough High School, I was really excited about working on this project because I knew how much the town really wanted that property. However, due to some difficulties, it didn't work, but at the end of the day, I think the town has gotten the most important part of it, and Toll Brothers has really stepped up, done an amazing job, if any of you have been out to the clubhouse. It was a little more than some paint and a roof.
Just a little bit.
It's now a beautiful building, and it's going to be an amazing amenity. So we are here this evening just to ask that you determine that we've met our obligations with respect to proposing the deed that we presented. I actually have the original here, too.
Fantastic.
If you really want to have ceremonial transfer of the deed, I'd let Dave do it. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, we're just happy to be here and see this thing come to fruition.
Thank you. All right. So now I'll open it up to the board. Any questions, comments? Good deal. I mean, I know I've talked through, Colin, on this a bunch, and I know where we are, I know the folks who've been there, checked everything out. Like I said, I think the biggest concern that people have had is around the stormwater, and the challenge that we have right now is that there's a lot of rain, and we're still working through some of those things, but it looks like we have a good path and that the town's interests are protected through the conservation commission and their permit. So I'm good with this. I think, you know, we've talked about this, we've been working through this for so, for so many weeks now, and it's a shame that Mr. Cohane is not here. I know he wanted to be here because he's been critical in following up on all these items and making sure that they're addressed. So if there are no questions or further comments, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board certify that the conditions relative to the thirty-acre parcel have been met, and that the board is prepared to seek town meeting approval to formally accept the deed, subject to the production of a bond totaling fifty thousand dollars being provided to the town, and subject both parties executing the agreement outlining these terms, for which the town manager shall be authorized to sign on the board's behalf.
Mr. Chair, second that.
Is there anything relative to town council review? Is that required in the motion?
Yes, I will sign it until he reviews it. I don't think it needs to be in the motion, but certainly I won't.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries four zero zero.
Well, thank you for your coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
We appreciate it.
It's been a long road, we're almost there.
Yes. Step at a time. Thank you very much.
We wish you much luck and success. All right. Six C, seasonal liquor license approval, Tingsborough Sports Center. Is that you, Jackie? No.
Oh, yes, it is, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to say.
She got Florida on line.
Just when I think I know exactly what's going on with all these. I know.
Okay, so this evening, we are asking the board to renew the town's one seasonal wines and malt beverages liquor license for Tingsborough Sports Concessions at five hundred Portos Hill Road, Unit Two, with Brian J. Wickens as manager. Seasonal licenses are subject to annual renewal, similar to the annual liquor license. However, these licenses are renewed in March instead of December. As with all renewals, this is contingent on our tax office confirming the tax compliance and receipt of all the required documents. Mr. Wickens had previously provided payment, certificate of liability, and worker's comp certificate.
One question I had, anything, I mean, I don't think we've seen anything, any, do we get feedback from police or fire, anything like that? I don't know of any issues or-
I haven't had on this, and I don't believe we've had any issues, but we haven't specifically asked for it.
Okay. Is that something we would normally do in a seasonal, or is seasonal different?
Because it's attached to an annual license, we do, before we do the annual licenses, we do solicit feedback, and they're supposed to provide us with call logs, things like that, so we didn't get any in.
Perfect. Okay. Questions, comments from the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the twenty-twenty-four seasonal liquor license as presented contingent upon a final tax verification.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries four zero zero. Six D, ratify collective bargaining agreement, Highway Department, SEIU Local Eight Eight Eight.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, as the board is aware, the collective bargaining agreement with the town, between the town and the highway union expires at the end of this fiscal year. As such, we began the process of negotiating the terms for a successor agreement in January. After three sessions, we're excited to share that we've come to terms on a successor contract. This was presented selective to the select board during its executive session on February twenty-sixth, where the board approved the MOA. Because you voted to approve it during the executive session, the open meeting law requires that you formally ratify that decision in public. The summary of it is that it results in about a three percent increase in fiscal year twenty-five for the highway union. It also clarified some language. We've been, there are certain things that we've been doing for years that just wasn't in the contract that they wanted to ratify, and it also recognized two essential changes in jobs. We have one employee that also is a licensed electrician and performs electrical work for the town, and this recognizes that, and then one employee who is a mechanic also, and Tingsborough doesn't have its own fleet division, so if you've ever been to the highway department, they have several very, very old dump trucks that they pull parts from to keep the other ones running, so this recognizes that as well. I think that it's a very fair contract, and it is effective July first twenty-twenty-four, expires on June thirtieth twenty-twenty-seven, and it was approved by their union at a meeting last week.
Any questions? I know we've all seen it, gone through it, so if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board ratify the highway union MOA as presented.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries four zero zero. And that is all of our new business. So now I will open it up for select board reports. Did you want to start?
I have nothing this evening.
We'll go this way.
I just wanted to thank the citizens for coming in. You know, it is difficult to navigate a lot of the mandates that are coming down from the state, and I just want to appreciate their time and effort coming in here, and I agree, state sometimes is wonky, right? And what are we going to do? Some things we are going to challenge and fight, and some things that we're going to put it to the town. You know, we're five of many, so I think that's the appropriate thing to do on a lot of those, is to put it to the town. But again, I really appreciate the citizens showing up to talk and discuss about it, so thank you.
Mr. Schneider.
And I will reiterate what Mr. Loise L mentioned earlier in his report about the election process, and would encourage residents of the town to volunteer to work at the polls, even if it's just for a few hours. I think it would give everyone a much better sense of the process, the security that's involved in our election process, and just, you know, just some civic duty there. So I would just fully encourage people to take up on that and volunteer to work those polls whenever they can.
And the only thing I have, as Colin had mentioned, trash cleanup, you can pick up here at town hall, I guess, and at the highway department, people can pick up trash bags for cleaning. Please be safe, use gloves when you're, when you're cleaning up. Sometimes those little tongs are kind of cool. Sometimes they let me use them, but it is really important. Unfortunately, people do, they do throw out some trash, and I think that maybe some of it is just like we had a really windy day on a trash day today, so maybe it was just blowing around. But let's help keep the town clean, and be safe when you do it, wear your boots, check for ticks, and wear your gloves. So with that, our next meeting is March twenty-fifth, and we have another one, which is tri board meeting on April eighth. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the select board enter into executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Tragic water supply district system development and road impact fee in all collective bargaining units. Also pursuant to exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, all non-union positions.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Schneider.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, that carries four zero zero. We are going to executive session. Thanks, everybody.